This is the add-on.
Mr. Commissioner.
Good morning, sir.
I know.
Mr. Commissioner.
All of them.
Ms. Balding, good morning. Are you filling in for Woods?
No, 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 I'm gonna sell some property today.
Not if I own something to say about it.
No, 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 we're selling it this time, we're not giving away.
Oh, wait, I know what you're doing.
You're putting land on it.
You're a good thing, that's right, you're always a good thing.
I do a good thing, well, that's a first for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm doing a good thing.
Yeah, you're doing good work, as you always do, and you have nothing to do with Shaleo and the IEC.
You don't have any of that to do with it.
For you, at least. Good morning, folks, Andy Castellini here.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Andy, can you...
The retiree, the retiree insurance summary.
Please, Andy, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you. Did you get the add-on for CDS to be authorized to buy furniture?
I did.
Okay, good.
Really?
And now there's another add-on.
Where is that? I didn't get an add-on.
Three add-ons for HR.
Correct.
Okay, just make sure you got those. I want to do those before the bills.
What's the add-on, where?
There's a...
Well, yeah, my thought was we would do, because the agreement with Creative Design Solutions...
Why are they doing that now? There's a certain rule that we shouldn't be adding them to last minutes.
Yeah, and that rule's violated all the time.
Yeah, I know. But don't do it.
Okay, then there's one.
I didn't know that. Did you, I didn't get an email, did he send me an email?
Oh, this, this is the add-on.
I didn't get it. Oh, what did I? Huh.
Okay, E is an add-on, that is an add-on, now there's another add-on, which has three votes.
So my, my thought was we would do, once we were done with the Board of Commissioner items, then we would add-on for, do the HR add-on before we go to the Health Department.
Um, before the Health Department.
Right, so once we're done with Commissioner items, then we would do the HR items.
Okay, I thought it might be more productive for, for Kim, because potentially there's gonna be a lot of people, speaking on the mask issue.
That's fine.
If we do, if we do HR before the ordinances, then they can get back to work.
Is that, the HR, that's what, we want to do it instead of at the end of the meeting?
And it technically would require three motions, three votes, but I'm sure Counselor would be fine, and I'd be fine.
What are the add-ons?
We do a motion, all three votes, all three.
Add-on, retiree insurance summary, that's...
I think they're titled, Retiree Plan A, Retiree Supplement, and Catastrophic, those are the three titles.
So how I, how I envision doing this is, we will cover the different items under the Board of Commissioners' agenda. We will, under bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council, go through, unless anyone would like to split these out, go through everything but the mask ordinance, and do that first, and then we'll hear the mask ordinance. And I may need a little help, since I'm obviously not in the room. We would offer up for any questions or comments, first from the Board of Commissioners, then we would open it up to any members of the public who are in the room, and then we would open it up to any members of the public who are, have called in. So that's kind of how I envision that piece going, then obviously then we would have final comments by the Board.
That's fine, and Andy, I would request that ordinance 8420 also be separated.
Okay, all right, then we will, then we will do that. Mike Hamlet here.
Good morning.
Hi, Mike. Mr. Woods, are you on the call?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Good morning, Mr. Woods.
Good morning, Commissioner Thomas.
Good morning.
Usual suspects, Amy Drake, Kelly Havens, John Gads. I don't know who Morgan Montes is, but she's a she slash her. Some of these names I don't.
All right. I could call the Tuesday, November 17th meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners to order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance, remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, we are meeting today to conduct our matters of our agenda. Please guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and discussion. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities, so that our affairs reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance. Please share a little of your wisdom with us, to help us do right to all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. Amen.
Amen. As a reminder, if you, if you were dialing in or on the Zoom call, please mute yourself to avoid feedback and unnecessary noise until, of course, the time comes when you may be participating. All right, first item on the agenda is opening and reading the bids, I don't believe there are any. Moving on to reports and requests, first is the Board of Commissioners, first item is the accounts payable docket, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Next item. We have Historic Preservation Commission Board appointment, I will now open up nominations.
I'd like to nominate Sarah Andrews.
Second the nomination.
We have motion to second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will now close nominations, all those in favor, I'll just appoint them to the, to Historic Preservation Commission, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Next up, sale of properties owned by St. Joseph County.
And Counselor Heppenheimer is approached to counter, please.
Good morning, Detective Officer Heppenheimer, seven oh four West Washington itself in Indiana. You've been able to call about two or three months ago, I was in the commission. Certainly, we had requests from two different residents in St. Joseph County inquiring about vacant lots that were their properties. One property was located at 902 Milton Street, and the other is a vacant lot near 522 D Dale. The commissioners authorized myself and my office to take the statutory steps necessary to lock the sale to all abutting landowners to these two vacant lots that were owned by the county. I think many years ago, the county would accept the ownership of parcels of real estate. Actually, we don't do that anymore, there's been changes over the years. But the county's owned these properties for a number of years. Statute requires that we provide certified mail notice to all abutting landowners and solicit bids. The, we see they bid for each of the parcels.
Whoever talks about Vietnam, would you stop it, please? Hit it mute button, thank you. And not interrupt Counselor when he's speaking.
Because I couldn't hear both, I'm sorry, I was like, I'm sorry.
No, disrespectful to everyone.
Yeah.
And, and one parcel was sold for $25, the other parcel was sold for $200. Like I said, these are vacant lots that have sat for a number of years in the county's name. And I'm asking that the commissioners approve these two sales. There's a number of documents that have provided, that need all signatures from the commissioners.
That's a little bit.
And if you'll approve that and sign it up, I'll meet with these successful bidders, and we'll pass the property into their name and get it back in cash flow.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, yeah.
These lands don't generate a great deal of property tax money, but it does help stabilize the neighborhoods, and that these families will enjoy and take care of those yards, mow them, and plant flowers, or plant flowers, or vegetables. Put up a fence and take care of it. So it's stabilized the neighborhood, it makes the families happier, and that's just a great thing. Thank you, Mr. Heppenheimer, for all your hard work. Any motion would include both parcels.
Mr. Thomas, both of these successful bidders have been mowing the lawns for, and keeping up the properties for a long period of time, and that's what generated their interest in trying to buy them, because they both have families, I believe, and, and now they'll have ownership in it.
Thank you, Counselor, for that information.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Heppenheimer?
Thank you, Mr. Heppenheimer.
Thank you.
Hearing none, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the sale of both of these properties that are owned by the St. Joseph County.
Second.
There's a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Next item, we have two severance agreements.
This is Peter Augustino on the line, attorney at law, offices at 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. Before you are two agreements that were added into, subject to the Commissioner approval today, with two employees in the Highway Department, which are basically amounts to an early retirement severance due to severe budget cuts that the Highway Department was facing, as explained by Jessica Carca, County engineer. We needed to come up with a plan for trying to avoid layoffs, which would have allowed higher-paid employees to stay on. This allows for employees to move up, takes care of some veteran employees on the way out, and in the end, ends up in a cost savings on the, on the long haul, because of being able to reduce the department at an overall lower cost. Answer any questions.
Are there, in fact, any questions or comments?
Yes, Counselor, do you know how many positions are being eliminated from the Highway budget in the year 2021?
I do not recall the specific number, but I think when we started the process, I think it was at least nine or 10.
Mrs. Clark, I thought it was 13, but Mrs. Clark, Engineer Clark, Madam Engineer, has been kind enough to come to the podium, maybe to answer this question?
Yeah, sure.
Senator Clark, County engineer, off the hood of the Central Department, City Council, County Road. The total positions eliminated from the 2020 into the 2021 season is 13. There were not 13 filled positions at the time that it was eliminated through, that type of thing. Several positions were taken, but the total budget reduction was 13 positions.
Thank you, Madam Engineer, thank you, Counselor.
13, okay.
You know, although I love making sure workers get their fair pay and they're due what benefits they've earned, I cannot support this, because this goes on to the larger problem that, of why I voted against the budget the last few years, including the 2021 budget, is here we have another reduction in staff, and there's 13 people that will be taken out of the Highway Department, who is gonna do this work? How are constituents gonna have their roads properly plowed, potholes filled, trees trimmed, mowing, painting the safety lines on the road? So, and I know, you know, Counselor mentioned the severe budget cuts in the county. There really wasn't that many cuts in the, in the budget, you know? When you consider that next year has no elections, and that right there saved 800 grand, and the Health Department reduced their budget by 200 grand voluntarily. So the general 1,000 fund really hasn't seen that many cuts. But the Highway Department, year after year after year, keeps facing these terrible cuts, which is one of the most representative services of citizens of St. Joseph County, and plowing and taking care of these roads, so that people can go to work, people can go to school, and it's just terrible to see that this is happening while money is being squandered and wasted in the IEC and other parts of the county. Now, some people might say, well, that's a different pocket, or we shouldn't have mixed this with that. But in reality, where there's a will, there's a way, and unfortunately, the current will is, is reduce highway workers and squander money in New Coral Isle. And, and this, on the surface, is like, is like an iceberg, it don't look so bad. But when you look at the real issue, and all that you, you think about what's really behind all this, it's just sad and it's a shame.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yes, there's a motion to approve these two severance agreements for the two employees that are retiring.
Second, we have a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to one. I do want to thank Jessica and Pete, but particularly Jessica, for trying to come up with a solution that we could let some of our employees exit, so this will be an overall cost savings, and also will help to maintain the morale of the Highway Department. But that's, you know, the challenge that we face, with those highway funds continue to be cut from the state. We are limited to some extent with what we're able to do, so I appreciate, as always, her doing as much as she can with as little as she has at times. All right, moving on to an agreement with Creative Designs Solutions.
Thank you, Commissioner Castelli, this is Jamie Woods. I'm presenting this agreement to you for your consideration today as part of the work that's ongoing in the St. Joseph County Jail. The Department has had a relationship with the Creative Design, who provided, previously provided furniture and furnishings for jail at their renovated facility. By this agreement, you'd be engaging them for basic design services of $3,500, and an estimated furniture budget of $58,600. This agreement was brought to you through the efforts of DLZ, and also the Sheriff's Department, and just to reiterate, this is the preferred vendor that the sheriff would like to work with, based upon their experience with them and their service to the county. Please remember, this is part of the CARES Act, it's a program that we've been working on at the, at the county jail.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Creative Design Solutions, I think Counselor said it, that the county's had a relationship with CDS, and in the past, those have been no-bid contracts, which I voted against. There's been some large, and like this one is some small. I do like hearing that CARES Act is paying for this, but that's still, at the end, taxpayers' dollars. We have a purchasing department, we have a county planning department. It seems that this could be, buying furniture could all be done in-house, without paying an architectural consultant to do that for us, so I will not support this.
I would point out that part of the reason for the hurry is that we do, there are some very severe time constraints in being able to get this project done by the end of the year, and that's why we have moved aside from our normal protocols in purchasing this equipment, because time is indeed the essence, and much like we have done with the entirety of the jail renovation project, we have tried to move things as quickly as possible, because this is important work that's being done, and we do have a hard stop from a time standpoint. If there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the agreement with the Creative Design Solutions for the furniture designs to upgrade the jail.
Second, we have motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to one. Next up for your reading pleasure, we have an add-on from the HR Department. We have some medical plan changes, I believe, for the retirees.
Good morning, Kim Tuskis, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County, offices in the State Department of Facilities. Before you is the plan of scheduled benefits for retirees, Plan A, which is under 65, the supplement, and the catastrophic plan. As of the meeting last week, you guys approved the changes on the ACO for the active employees plan. This will take care of the retirees and the catastrophic with them being joined to the ACO program. These are three separate plans, but I would ask everybody, who is in the audience, to vote in as one.
Thank you, Kim. Counselor, I have no objection to one vote on all three contracts, do you?
None.
Thank you, Counselor.
Are there any questions or comments?
I thank you and your staff for keeping this ball rolling.
If there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this retiree insurance situation.
All three contracts?
All three contracts, yeah.
Second.
We have motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Next, move on, bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council at a public hearing held on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. The county council passed the following ordinance, these are all establishing of salaries and fixing the number of employees. Ordinance 7820 and 7920, Portage Manor, 8020, adult probation. Are there any questions or comments regarding any of these items?
Those three, though, sir.
Hearing none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve these ordinance 78-20, 79-20, and 80-20.
Second.
We have motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 8120, which is a monthly transfers and appropriations, and we also have ordinance 8320, which is area plan, which is fixed land usage regulations, cleaning up some language. Any questions or comments regarding either of these items?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
Move these ordinances, number 81-20 and 83-20.
Second.
We have motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 8420, which is from area plan modifying the subdivision ordinance.
Mr. Brown, are you here to speak on this or not? Andy, there's no one here to speak on it, so I guess I'll just jump into it, if that's okay?
That's fine.
From what I read here, it says that the third paragraph, whereas the proposed subdivisions do not include an extension of road utilities construction, blah, 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 blah. Basically, it appears to me to be an ordinance to streamline some paperwork, and some changing of properties and subdivisions. From my experience, 12 years on this board, the more restrictions on a subdivision, the better, to protect the other residents of the subdivision, and anybody connected to the subdivision, and anybody in the watershed. You know, we've had terrible flooding in this county, we'll have terrible flooding in the future, and if people go around changing things, and they don't go through the proper steps, there could be more disaster, and they could inflict pain and punishment on their neighbor, or people two miles down the road that weren't even aware of something that happened five years ago, because somebody streamlined some stuff, and someone was able to change something without the full eyes and knowledge of other people. I'm not against streamlining, but it seems that, streamlining just for the sake of it, and there's not even anyone here to speak on this matter, which is kind of odd, it seems that, I'd rather, I feel as representative of the people, that their interests are that everything goes through the normal process, due process, and that way, there's more eyes checking things for any errors and potential problems that might arise down the road. Thank you, so I will not support 8420.
So hearing, hearing those comments, if it's the will of the Board, we could ask, since, I believe we may have a little time before the end of the meeting, we could ask someone to reach out to someone from area plan, and see if they could come down and speak to that, so we could just leave this, don't take action on the item, and circle back to it later in the meeting, if that would be appropriate.
Hello, this, I apologize, this is Abby Wiles with Area Plan. I, uh...
Even better.
Yeah, great.
And what's, and what's your address?
I'm here at the County City Building, in Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the 7th and 11th floor.
Thank you.
All right, the subdivision ordinance is, the updates to that started well before I came on board, and is really the culmination of years of, I would say, administration of the current ordinance from the former director and the staff. The major change for this ordinance is the elimination of the three-lot rule. Previously, any subdivision that created a new building, or a new parcel over three lots, required a major subdivision. Now, we're only requiring, requiring a major subdivision if the extension of infrastructure is required. This is above and beyond what's required by Indiana State Code, that only requires a major subdivision if there's extension of streets. The other major changes to the subdivision, I would say, are elimination of the corrective flats, whereas previously, we required a filing to correct scriveners errors, we're able to do those now via an affidavit. So it's much more business-friendly, and I would say, other changes to the subdivision are largely improving the ease of administration. We've removed sections of the, from the ordinance that is really pertaining to filing requirements, and put those into a separate document, rather than having them described in the ordinance itself. So largely, the, I'd say, the change for the definition of... So, largely, the, I'd say, the change for the definition of major subdivision, other changes to improve the ease of administration, including, you know, the filing requirements being separate, as well as eliminating the need for corrective flats and handling those via affidavit. So, happy to answer any additional questions, if there are some at this time.
Sure. Ms. Abby, how long have you been on the department, how long, working on this?
So, I came on August 1st, and all of the proposed changes had been written and provided to me day one. I held it back for a couple of months, so that way, I could read through everything and talk with the staff to make sure I understood everything we were, I was putting forward prior to asking for the changes to be adopted. I do want to say as well, that the staff, prior to my coming on, had extensive outreach with engineering, county surveyors, and a lot of the folks in the development community. And these changes have been widely anticipated. I had a couple of calls when I first came on board, asking when they would be put forward by folks from the local development community. So, much anticipated.
Well, thank you, Ms. Abby. I think, if you're honest, you just started August 1st, you delayed it a few months. It's the pandemic, so there was very little going on publicly. You know, you said you were informed that people were contacted, but I was not contacted. And, and it's, and I think you mentioned it, it's a nail on the head. This was kind of at the interest of developers, people that want to make a profit doing something, so they want, it's probably easier for them if the rules are relaxed and steps are skipped and make life easy for them. I love that you mentioned that some of our rules here are above and beyond the state code. You know, that's done by design and intention of people wiser than us that have these seats before us, just to protect our water, to protect us from KFOs, to protect us from all kinds of bad development, like development in New Carlyle, or subdivisions being built in floodplains, or subdivisions being built next to KFOs, et cetera. So, although I, I don't blame you, Ms. Abby, and I sincerely believe that you believe that this might be the best thing for the county, but I thought it smelled funny, and now I tend to say, it is, that's where the smell comes from, and I'm very much strongly against it.
Are there any other questions or comments, either for Abby or in general for the board?
So, Abby, are you okay with it, hon?
Absolutely.
That's what I thought, okay. And then they had a nine-zero vote in the council, so all the council people supported it.
All right. If there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this, approve this ordinance of number 84-20.
Second. We have a motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, two to one. Finally, the last item on the agenda is Bill 5820, became, becoming ordinance 8520. It's an ordinance establishing requirement to wear a face mask in certain locations in order to prevent or limit the spread of the COVID-19 disease from the Health Department. What I think we will do, since I imagine we have some, some individuals who'd like to speak on this, we will first have the petitioner kind of give us some brief background on this, and the Board of Commissioners will be able to ask any questions they might have. And then we will open up the floor to anyone wishing to make comment on this, and then we will kind of wrap things back up. But I guess we'll start with those in person, and then we will move to those who have joined remotely. And then, once the public comment portion is done, then we will have a discussion again with the Board of Commissioners, if that is appropriate. So, I believe Dr. Bob is on the call.
For formality, Commissioner Costelli, trying to be your eyes for a second, just so you are aware, I don't think there's anybody physically here to, to talk on the motion. I don't really see anybody in the audience, but there was a lot of emails and phone messages, I guess there were one or two people.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of phone messages and emails saying that they would be speaking, so I don't, I would think that they must be on Zoom or something. And I'm giving a nod from Maria that there are a lot of people.
Yep.
Okay. So, back to you, Commissioner Costelli.
All right. So, Dr. Bob, are you on the call?
Yeah, I am, Commissioner Costelli, thank you. So, this is Dr. Bob Einter, Health Officer, Saint Joseph County Department of Health, eighth and ninth floors. And as the Commissioner stated, we're asking the three Commissioners to pass the ordinance that has been passed by the Saint Joseph County Council, establishing the requirement to wear a face mask in certain locations in order to prevent or limit the spread of the COVID-19 disease. We've certainly had a number of meetings already about this, and I'm not sure that there's much value in taking your time, Commissioners, in reiterating what has been said multiple times. But, very briefly, we all recognize at this point that the COVID pandemic is causing great harm to our county, to the people of our county, and significant morbidity and mortality within our county. There are relatively few steps to stop the spread of this virus. One of the major and main steps that can be taken, taken are face coverings. Face coverings have been shown definitively to reduce the spread of the virus from individuals who are infected with the virus to individuals who are not infected with the virus. And because up to 30 to 40% of individuals who are infected with the virus are asymptomatic, that is, they have no symptoms, do not know that they are infected, these individuals can be carrying the virus in public around other individuals and infect those other individuals without either party knowing it. In order to mitigate the spread of the virus, we have recommended face coverings to be worn in certain locations, particularly indoors, when physical distancing of six feet cannot be maintained. This ordinance, as mentioned, has been passed by the county council, and I respectfully request your approval of it too. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Doctor. I have a couple of quick questions. I guess there is, first, I will say that this has been one of the issues that I've received the greatest number of communications on, which is great. I mean, this is an important role, when people in the community come and share their opinions, either for or against the action that the Board of Commissioners is looking to take. Just a couple of clarifying questions with the ordinance, because some of the language is a little vague. The, the intent of this is to, from an employer's standpoint, if their employees are not wearing face coverings, then the employer could be fined. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there, is there any provision in this that could fine, let's say, a business for a member of the community or one of their patrons or customers who come in, comes into their business? Could they be fined for that?
No. They may not be fined, they cannot be fined for that.
And then, could an individual be fined if they entered a business or so chose to not wear a face covering? Could they be fined?
No, they cannot be fined.
Okay. And then, this is primarily complaint-driven. So, the only way the Health Department would even interact with an organization would be if they called and received a complaint. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Those are the initial questions I had. Are there any other questions from the board? Or comments, for that matter?
Yes, thank you, Andy. And thank you for clarifying that, Andy and Doctor. I hate to see such a watered-down version of it. I'd rather see greater help, but sometimes that's compromised, to get something sort of through, such as the, the original burn ban allowed for an amnesty. And fortunately, now the council is finally staking the steps to get rid of the, any type of leaf burning through the introduced last night, thanks to Ms. Clark reminding me, Hill number 114 hyphen 20. But, when the Board of Commissioners first voted and approved Dr. Iones and Dr. Fox, I personally was very impressed by their huge resumes and bios, their extensive education, continuing education, lifetime accomplishments, published journal pieces. I thought we were very lucky to have two doctors of such high caliber. They, like many people in many good industries and fields, seem educational, dedicated to society's health. And their education, like others, is also built on educational knowledge, generational knowledge, the wisdom of germs and bacteria, Joseph Lister and Louis Pasteur. Our docs were not expected to rediscover this knowledge, rediscover penicillin or anything else. They wisely built and learned on generational knowledge. My generation was raised watching MASH on TV. I know and understand the benefits that masks save lives. This is generational knowledge for over 100 years. Masks save lives, water rolls downhill, these are just common sense things and fundamental. If your grandchild is born and you go to see it, you wear a mask. If your grandmother's having surgery and you visit her in intensive care, you're wearing a mask. I want to apologize to Dr. Fox and Iones for the lack of respect they've been given and the way they've been treated. Their lifetime of knowledge and vocation to this community seemed to have taken a backseat, and that knowledge and common sense were held captive. Logic was caught in a whirlwind and a hysterical frenzy for the last six months. I hope that this new leaf burning ban through the council, it passes right away and says it doesn't take six months. And I thank God, we're finally reaching this point. I only regret that, again, the delays and this watered-down version. Everybody walking into every public function should be wearing a mask, period. But even the watered-down version will save lives. Does it violate the Constitution? I think it was Thurgood Marshall who said the Constitution is not a suicide pact. We all know you can't yell "fire" in a theater if there's no fire. Hopefully, this restores consumer confidence and will keep theaters open in Indiana. I have received many emails, I'm sure the other Commissioners, Andy mentioned, and phone calls, both ways, but some of them were just hysterical, very unfair and cruel to our fine doctors who cared nothing but taking care of us. Some of them were very inappropriate. In fact, I've seen some where the doctors would take the time to respond to some people to explain that they are patriotic and they are American. And I thought, my God, these doctors have enough to do without responding to some people, possibly crackpots, crackpot charges, to defend their patriotism as Americans, while we have this pandemic on. And then I thought, you know, maybe the doctors find it as comic relief to respond to weird, scary, bizarre, inappropriate comic relief. But a lot of the things were inappropriate, some things, some phone messages I got from people that said, there just hasn't been enough deaths. And even if more people die, it's just not, it's not enough, it's not worth it. Strangely, a lot of people seem to be business owners, hence the developer. It's strange that even one percenters get elected and not instead of the 99 percenters. I, I do like, some people mentioned the religious exception. And I'm a very religious man, I think most people in this room and on the phone are. And ironically, it was what, about three weeks ago, that the Health Department came out and said, there's got to be more control, especially in churches. And my fellow Commissioners might recall, a week prior to that, at the Commissioners' meeting, I actually said, I wish there would be lightning up for churches, because there was article in the news about the high amount of drug overdose, suicides, and other problems and crime, that if, maybe if there was more religion comforting people, then maybe there would be less problems. But I still got to concede to the knowledge of doctors who are making knowledgeable decisions, which they are trained to do. You know, if anybody out there hears too many conspiracy theories, they need to take a break and watch, you know, MeTV or another channel. Or take that enthusiasm and go collect food for the poor, you know? Or rake your neighbor, elderly neighbor's lawn or leaves, but don't believe and spread the conspiracy theories. If you object for any reason not to wear a mask, he should probably stay home. This is an emergency, from top to bottom, Republican, Democrat, and everything in between, this is a national, international emergency, and people need to do their part. Citizens need to be responsible and be citizens. They have, everybody has an obligation to their family members, their neighbors, their coworkers, and all the other strangers in America and on the planet. Be responsible, be positive examples to others and yourself. So, that way, in five years, you look back and say, no, I wasn't a panicking fool, I supported common sense, we got through this. Because there's going to be another problem in five years. And back in '08, it was the economic collapse, and '01, it was the Twin Towers. There's always going to be something, and the question is whether we learn from those mistakes or do we build on them? And like generational knowledge, we need to build on them. We do not need selfish typhoid marys. We need clear instructions for businesses. We need consumer confidence. There used to be signs that said, no shirt, no shoes, no service. I honestly think there should be no mask, no service. We also got to be careful of hysterias. Hysterias elect titlers. Hysterias forget the generational knowledge and common sense that masks save lives. Because you want to watch MASH reruns, or Marcus Welby, or you want to go see your grandchild born, or see your grandma in a hospital in ICU, there's going to be a mask. And everybody knows it, and to pretend you live in the fantasy line, fantasy world, where you don't need to wear a mask, and you don't, you don't owe something to your family, you don't owe something to your neighbor, you don't owe something to your coworker, you don't owe something to the clerk behind the counter who is paying, you're paying your goods to. That's a sheer of, of lack of duty and responsibility that we have to our fellow Americans and our people. We need consumer confidence, we need respect for each other. And some of this hysteria is caused by the pain of the pandemic. If you got cut by a knife and you were bleeding, you go to the doctor, go to a good hospital and get care and treatment. The pandemic, not only has it caused economic pain, it causes emotional pain, financial pain, stress, and, and sometimes that is manifesting in, well, I know how I'll handle it, I'm just going to complain about the mask problem or the leak problem. And people do this, sometimes not even psychologically aware of what they're doing. But we do have to be Americans, and we need to step up, and we need to be respectful of others. And again, this is a watered-down version, but it's better than no version, and this step will make victory closer.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fleming, do you have any comments or questions?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. I just want to make a couple of comments. One of the, a lot of the feedback I've received is this is kind of an overreach of the Health Department trying to take control and, and get more power, or even use the fin, finding mechanism as a fundraising or level. I will say this, the Health Department has been incredibly forthcoming in working with this ordinance, and as Commissioner Thomas said, it was much more, much more limiting in its initial incarnations, but the Health Department continued to work with the different entities, including elected officials, to try and make it a bit more, not even responsible, but to try and accommodate a lot of the issues that were raised. And a lot of the feedback I've received has also been, they appreciate that the Health Department's ruling is to do that. And I will say, one of the best ways for me to gauge how the Health Department will work for this, because I don't want to speak for Dr. Bob, so please correct me if I'm misstating, that the Health Department has enough to do, so they don't want to be in control or in charge of going into every business and trying to hound them and nitpick.
Oh, my God.
And micro manage. So, then, that's what they're, they're not looking to do those things. Comment aside, they're not. And I can say this by, they've been working for the last month with the bars and nightclubs. And they, we initially had outbreaks there, and in the last month or so, they've had three or four meetings with them, and they have worked with those entities, they've gone in, done inspections, and they've worked with all those organizations so they can try and stay open, but do so responsibly. And we had a meeting just yesterday, where the feedback was good, the conversation was good. So, the Health Department has been working with other entities too, trying to keep us safe, but also keep them open. safe, but also keep them open. Lastly,
Oh, sorry.
I'm also wondering how the recent governor executive order, who his language is everyone shall wear a mask or face covering when they enter a facility. So it is even more, it's outside of St. Joe County, the Board of Commissioners or the Health Department here, because the entire state is under the same mandate. Like it, don't like it, it's still, it's still the executive order that we are also bound to follow. So anyway, that said, I will now open it up first to anyone in the, anyone in the room that would like to speak either for or against this.
Mike Hammond is here.
Yeah, Commissioner Castelli, the fourth commissioner, accountable auditor, Mike Hammond. Good morning, Mike Hammond, St. Joe County Auditor, with the Office of Second floor, blah, blah. To thank you to Dr. Bob and Dr. Fox, all the work they've done, subjected to, you know, not just opposed to opinion, but some shame, insane theories that, you know, discuss quite frankly. It's one thing to have a different opinion about trying to achieve whatever end we're going on after, but these personal attacks are very, very disturbing. And, you know, I apologize for whatever you suffer from that. I want to thank the county council for acting on this. I appreciate the county commissioners and Commissioner Thomas, your wonderful statement. I really am grateful for that. I am still suffering from the effect of COVID. You know, when you listen to people, when you're not listening to folks who peddle pseudoscience, I mean, it's common sense that if we, by wearing masks, we protect others somewhat, not entirely, from potentially becoming infected, and we ought to do that. And people, you know, talk about freedom, it inhibits their freedom. I want to be free to live my life like I used to live my life. I want to be free to walk across the room and not run afresh. I want to be free to roll around and throw a plate at my grandkids. Free of all my blood pressure matters, okay? I want to be free to go back to my old life. It's probably not going to happen. So I'm not asking for pity, but I'm just saying that if y'all can pass this thing and if somebody, I don't want anyone suffering what I'm going through, let alone all these deaths. We just had one of our former county employees, I believe, John Burme, I believe worked in Erie Plan, I can't remember, a good friend of mine, he passed away yesterday, so sad of COVID. I want to be free to keep teaching my sixth graders of Facebook and not go virtual. You know, I want to be free to be able to go into restaurants. I want to be free to go to mass, after the U. That's what I want. If masks get us there, then I'm off course. And I'm willing to make this sacrifice. We've forgotten about that. It's all individualistic. We need as Americans to pull together and toughen up and do this for our fellow citizens. That's all I got. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else in the council chamber is wishing to speak?
There's, there is someone going to the counter, to the podium. Anybody else wishing to speak, please sit near the podium or wave your hand that we know you're going to speak. Okay, Andy, after this next speaker, I think you can open the floor up to the people online.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
Derek Peter, 1748 Quarters Avenue in South Bend. Commissioner-elect this time. So I want to thank everybody that's been involved, the Health Department, the commissioners, the council, and the public. I don't think, I'll disagree with Mr. Thomas, because everybody can have a different opinion. I don't think any comment is inappropriate. Everybody can have their thoughts on what it is. If you, if you study this and look at it, there's been different day, different opinions, different doctors. The Health Department, again, has done a great job of trying to keep the community safe. I appreciate the council and the commissioners getting to this point. I think Commissioner Castelli did a good job of defining that this only adheres to employees working in a business must wear a mask. The education part, working with businesses, I don't think anybody in this room or listening wants to go after individual businesses or fine people. I think, again, the education part, but then it comes back to people's own beliefs on what wants to happen. So getting the correct information, getting information at the time. I know that the Republican Party, per se, was criticized after a watch party after the election of people not wearing masks. I was there. People wore masks coming in, they wore them going out. And it's ironic that the only people who apparently got ill were the two Tribune reporters who had a mask on the whole time. So again, all the information of mask, mask, mask is great. Nothing is 100% all the time. But again, I appreciate the council and the commissioners and all the people involved in county government taking the step. Again, this is, these are our uncharted waters. But again, I think the, the part of the people who are not in favor, again, I think it's just the information that's out there for public consumption, that in today's society, we do live in a overloaded information. So it's hard to sometimes to pick out, and people will pick out what they want to hear at a specific time. So again, my part on this is I think it's good for, if you're going in a business and they say you have to wear a mask, then if you can't go in that business, that's everybody's choice. But I think it's a good step of having the employees adhere to the rules that you're going to do, and it's not intended for the private citizen 24/7 if you are in a mask, because everybody's own decision. So thank you all.
Thank you, Derek. Where's the ring?
So are there any individuals who are joining us through Zoom or other means that would like to comment? If so, please state your name and address for the record. And counselor, I think they are limited to three minutes.
That's correct, Commissioner Castelli. I'd like to speak. I'm Amy Drake. Can I start?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
State your address.
Okay. I'm from, I'm from Granger, Andy Castelli's district.
You have to state your address.
So St. Joseph County may have been the first place.
Drake, you need to state your address, please.
My exact address?
Yes.
Does it have to be the whole number? I'm worried I could have retaliation. Can I just use Granger?
I'll defer to the commissioners, but it's the policy. If people come up, they state their address, and then they address the commissioners.
This is a contentious issue, so I get nervous about putting my address out in public. But I think everybody in this room knows that I live in Granger.
Well, it's the policy for the record that you state your full address, period.
Can I not speak if I don't do that?
Well, if you can't state your name and address, you know you can.
Okay, well, if I have any retaliation, I'm going to be very nervous about this. I live at 16985 Hidden Valley Drive in Granger. I want to say that St. Joseph County may have been the first place in the state where citizens were forced by law to wear a mask. The reasons it started were political. The governor wanted to open up the state after lockdown, and the mayor of South Bend and the Health Department didn't. And suddenly, we had a mask order in place. It was an obvious affront to civil liberties from the start. Since when do we allow government intervention into our lives like this? When the Health Department decided to issue its order, they made a big power grab. There's nothing in state statute that allows them to force masks on the population. If you read the Indiana statute, the state legislature gave the Health Department the power to instruct on masks. Nowhere does it say the Health Department can mandate masks. That's why the Health Department is being sued, and rightfully. Now that he's been caught issuing an illegal order, Dr. Einturs is backtracking and telling people in the paper that his order is basically instruction. But my question is, why did he then use mandatory language in the order and threaten to close businesses if they didn't comply? Now, Dr. Einturs wants to legitimize his illegal order, so he's asking you to make it law, one that will allow him and his staff to intimidate our local business community by holding over their heads the threat of violation after violation. How can we trust him with even more power when we've seen him abuse the power he has? As elected officials, you may think you need to do something. However, I hope, if anything, you will be honest and fair today and realize you don't. I can show you charts of places all over the world where masks have been implemented without success. Los Angeles, Alabama, Miami, Hawaii, France, the Philippines, Israel, Spain, United Kingdom, and St. Joseph County is no different. It follows the same pattern. Masks were put into place in May when active cases appeared to be under 500. Now we're up to over 3,500. It doesn't take a genius to see masks didn't make an impact. Still, health officials are telling us to ignore the data in front of our eyes. They tell us masks will work, even though we can see quite clearly that they don't. Again, we're being lied to. I have no problem with you wearing a mask if you want to, but if you want to force masks on your citizens under the punishment of fines when you can't show they're effective, I do have a problem with that. Your number one job is to uphold the rights of your citizens. When you look at the freedoms taken away from us in the last few months, it feels like we're living in a communist country. Elected officials have assumed power they don't have, and scared citizens have permitted it. We've been told to stay in our houses, close our businesses, not to worship, not to go to school, not to gather with friends, not to celebrate Thanksgiving. The governor just said he's going to send police and state homeland security to shut down businesses and drag them in front of licensing boards. This is tyrannical. Meanwhile, overdoses are up and depression and anxiety are skyrocketing. Something frightening is happening. I ask you to stop this chain reaction. We need to stop acting like COVID is something we can control and stop blaming citizens for not being able to do the impossible and defeat a virus. No mask or fines are going to be enough to stop it. Today, I ask you to vote no on fines and restore freedom to this county. And I'd like to say three things about what Dr. Einturs said that are misleading. One, there's nothing in the ordinance that say businesses will not be fined for customer behavior. Number two, he says it's complaint driven, but they've gone off after bars that were not complaints. And when you said that there were outbreaks at bars, I don't think that was ever the reason that they went after bars. My understanding was that they were just doing regular weekend raids on bars. And that's the end. Thank you.
I will speak very briefly, a couple of clarifying points. Number one, from the Health Department's standpoint, the reason they went out to bars and other establishments were, they were complaint driven. They also went to the farmer's market and other locations because they received complaints, so they went to follow up related to that. So I guess that's the, just that's where that happened. All right, next comment, please.
Steve Miller, 506 North Beach, Osceola, Indiana. I just want to commend the lady that was up first, and a lot of those statements that she made are verbatim for a lot of us in this community. And I do know that there's a passion on both sides. That's understandable. But in retrospect, you know, we all are here for the same purpose, which is to help each other get through each every, every day better than we did the day before. And to put these types of fines in place aren't doing any justice for any of us. And I want to voice my opinion in conjunction with many others that I talk to all the time. And I ask all to consider. And according to what we all know, what we've been told, there's about a 92 and a half percent confirmation of wearing masks and has been in place for quite some time. And obviously, we've had a huge spike in cases both statewide and nationally. It seems apparent that the masks aren't working. And I ask the Health Department to consider other measures that can have more of an impact, namely, putting restrictions in the senior care facilities, maybe having temperature monitoring devices for people when they come through to determine if they have a fever, not to keep them out of the building. And other things, and hand sanitizer, obviously, to use that when they first walk in the door. Those things seem to be more proactive than the mask that seems to restrict. And, you know, I was in the medical field, and unfortunately, you know, what really is a travesty, and I would hope that the Health Department would act on this, is that our health and well-being is truly derived to making sure our vitamin D is at the utmost level that it needs to be. And when we go get a physical done from our doctors, they don't even check our vitamin D. And that's a travesty in itself, because I would think that if our vitamin D was at the proper level that it needs to be, there'd be a lot less sickness, never mind just the COVID as well. So unfortunately, our freedoms and our liberties seem to be at jeopardy here by our forefathers, and it seems like these things aren't working. And I ask for whoever's to vote, consider all the measures that I've suggested, as well as anything else in a proactive stance without having this mask order, because it's obviously not working. And I hope that you consider this. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Morgan Munson. I'm a doctoral student in neuroscience at Notre Dame, and I live at 3409 Oak Crest Drive here in South Bend. Just to start out as someone who does study science, just to focus on the fact that no matter what we think that we see as, the science is the science. And as Dr. Bob said, masks do work, whether or not we think they do or not, whether or not we see things happen. So to trust the experts who are doing research on this, we truly do have our best intentions in mind, and the right to life for everyone, which is our highest right, is to keep on living. So I thank all those who are seeking to protect that by doing our duty. So all this is to say that, you know, we can see that the seriousness of the COVID pandemic is clear. We're in one of the most challenging phases right now with rising positive cases, hospitalizations, and death. Here in St. Joe County, several doctors I know in different ERs are starting to get quite worried about the capacity they have left in beds and in intubation and all that. And so thinking about the fact to have this mask wearing mandate, my husband's a teacher in schools. All of the kids there wear masks. And we've actually had pretty good luck at keeping our kids safe because everyone's inside wearing masks. Wouldn't we expect the same thing in our, in our businesses? And to say that you have a mandate without a fine, where's the teeth in to say that people actually have to adhere to this? Being able to say that there is this fine will create more of a public reception, restore consumer confidence in me. I, whenever I enter an establishment and someone's not wearing a mask, I immediately walk out because I care about my health, I care about the health of everyone around me. So I really do encourage the fin of this mask. I encourage listening to health experts who are looking at studies, and to those who are voting to remember that, you know, let's listen to our experts. And while those who have spoken ahead of me do not believe that masks are important, they're not the experts in this. And I understand that there's lots of concern, but we should listen to the experts, is I guess what I'm saying. So thank you for your time. Thank you once again to Dr. Bob and everyone who's protecting the public health of people in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. Hello, this is Steve Francis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. My name is Steve Francis, and I live at 54174 Judy Lake Drive in Clay Township. And I want to support the mask ordinance. I think that the Health Department really needs a tool that they can use to make sure that we're safe in stores and bars, restaurants, and around town. I think a story that I will tell that is illustrative of the problem that we face out here is that without that tool, which doesn't need to be used in every occasion, but can be one in a whole toolkit for the health officer to enforce the mask rule. I, I went to, right after the first quarantine or the first shutdown, whatever you want to call it, occurred in March or April, I went to the farmer's market. And I was one who complained about that to the health officers. And I, I simply went around and saw about a third of the patrons not wearing masks. But more alarming were people who were vendors at the farmer's market, selling produce, selling cooked goods, food items, selling plastic, handling credit cards and so on. Many of them were not wearing masks. And when I simply went up and asked them why they weren't, because there was a mask order in effect, they, they got very angry at me, told me to go away. I went to the manager of the market, which is supposed to be the owner, I suppose. And I was told, well, they can't enforce it. And they were, you know, and they're not going to enforce it. And so as I was walking out, all of a sudden, a squad car, South Bend Police Car pulled up. I had had the police called on me for asking a vendor why they weren't wearing a mask. And when I, I happen, I do have a copy of the, of the rule in my pocket, and I pulled it out, and I said, I, I realize you don't want to enforce this, but this is a rule offered by or passed or enforced by the county Health Department. And he said he has no authority to enforce it. The, he would arrest me, the vendors wanted me arrested for trespassing, and I was to leave the facility immediately, which I did. I left. I didn't want to cause any more problems. When I went back four months later, the same vendors still did not have masks after multiple complaints have been made to the health officer. They simply do not have the authority they need. And I urge you to pass the mask ordinance so that you're not placing citizens like myself, who are elderly, compromised in various ways, in situations where we're confronted for simply trying to exercise safety measures that are put in place by the county. So I urge you to pass this ordinance and give the county health officer just one more tool that they can use to make sure that we're kept safe in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Jane Greenwood, can you hear me?
Yes, Jane.
Oh, oh, okay. Hi, it's Jane Greenwood. I live at 51545 Autumn Ridge Drive in Granger. I live at 51545 Autumn Ridge Drive in Granger. And I just want to read something that talk show host Casey Hendrickson to all the commissioners. And I'd like to read it from you some excerpts. The full version can be found on his website. Experts originally opposed mask requirements because people would inevitably not use them correctly. They would abandon other more effect measures to prevent infection. They would no longer wash their hands or socially distance themselves, stay home. Those warnings have all come true. In early March, Dr. Anthony Fossey told 60 Minutes, "Face masks were not necessary for the general population," noting that while masks might make people feel a little bit better, they don't provide the protection folks believe they do, and they might create unintended consequences. Fossey was not alone. I covered dozens of infectious disease experts at the time who said the same thing. Masks went from least important, least effective measure you can take to becoming the primary means of preventing yourself from getting. The CDC's own data shows that an overwhelming number of people who get COVID wear the mask in accordance with mask mandates in the U.S. If masks work the same way these local health officials say they do, infection rate for mask wearers shouldn't be so high. It's over three quarters of those infected regularly. Everywhere in the world, the mask mandates have been in effect. The virus has continued to spread. Why? Because COVID is airborne. We originally didn't think it was and focused on droplets. Masks can work on droplets by reducing the distance a droplet travels. No mask, not even an N95, work on airborne viruses. The CDC's website can even states that masks don't filter the COVID virus. Up until the pandemic, the scientific community understood that masks of all kinds do not prevent viral spread or infection. Suddenly, without real evidence, they do now know. There are experts, no peer reviewed clinical trials shows masking are effective, only preliminary lab results, some of which have problematic mythology. I don't write you to debate the efficiency of masks. I write you to point out that without a doubt, masks have not worked as some have portrayed them to. In Michiana, people are abiding by mask mandates on masks with very few exceptions. Not only is it not based on sound science, so the real world's data to enforce mandates under penalty of law, but it's counter reproductive because considering the widespread adherence to mask mandates is in place now. Furthermore, violating the rights of business property rights to require them to be an enforcer of these mandates under penalty of fines would be a gross abuse of power. Enroaching on these rights in this fashion would also be problematic. But to do so knowing the ordinance is enforcing with penalties, mandates that have proven beyond the shadow of a doubt to be ineffective would be a dereliction of duty. I understand the immense pressure the government and public health officials are under trying to fight this virus and protect citizens. I understand it's easier to just go along to get along so that you can say at least you tried at election time. However, to allow such a government abuse over a mandate that isn't working under the false guise that it would somehow magically start working now because there are penalties would be a violation of your oath of office. Surely, there's another way without setting the governor up to abuse citizens just to appease the mob that has produced no evidence that this would work to begin with. Sincerely, Casey Hendrickson. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Kelly Hengens. Am I in?
Yes.
12032 Timberline Trace North in Granger. This is an issue of democratic principles. This is America where people are supposed to make up their own minds. And we're all looking at all of this data and evaluating it and then looking at our individual circumstances and applying it. And there are definitely circumstances where we put on masks because people are vulnerable or we can't maintain distance or people are just expressing enough concern that we do it. There are other situations where people are not expressing those concerns, where people have already had the virus and are not particularly concerned about getting it. There are so many different circumstances that individuals need to be allowed to take under consideration, including small business owners. I'm a small business owner. I have to make those decisions each time I apply them to each of my customers and each of the people that I work with. The way the market works, each employer is going to have to evaluate, well, how much time are we spending together? How much impact would it have on my employees trying to work with a mask? How much, you know, OSHA considerations? All these things have to be individually considered in each situation to apply a cookie cutter law that just boom, doesn't take any of that into consideration is to make a huge mistake economically and as far as civil liberties. And I can't believe we're willing to open ourselves up to all the potential lawsuits. You know, a single ADA lawsuit is thousands of dollars. A single ADA penalty, OSHA penalties and violations are not something we want to be messing with. First Amendment, religious liberties. And what we haven't really talked about much is, have you guys seen the structure for who gets the $50 fine and who gets the $250 fine? And are you prepared to oversee that that's actually being administered fairly and not based on some kind of bias or retribution? Or I think we're walking into a huge quagmire here. And I really wish you would vote against this in the interest of preserving our liberties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Could I say a few words, please? Andrew Chabot, I live at 17382 Cleveland Road, South Bend. I think I probably need to let you know that I'm an attorney, but I'm not here in that capacity today. I just want to echo a lot of what the lady right before me said. That was really well stated. It hits a lot of the hot button issues that, you know, that are kind of circulating around in my mind when I look at the proposed ordinance or mandate or instruction or whatever it means, you know, semantically. This risks benefits principle, risks versus benefits analysis that each one of us is individually supposed to do for ourselves is fundamental to liberty, yes. It's also fundamental to the practice of medicine, if I'm not mistaken. So if I were to draw up an analogy here, which I'm not very good at, so you can toss the analogy out if you don't like it. But it's a bit like a doctor performing forced surgery that the patient would never consent to. The patient had even said ahead of time, hey, if these circumstances come up, do not perform this procedure on me, whatever happens, please do not. It's almost like a violation of a DNR order. It's just, like I said, you don't have to accept it. But I find that analogy really telling. Are we really practicing medicine here? Or are we ruling? Are we governing? Are we forcing people to accept something is true, which does not stand up to scrutiny? Are we forcing people to abandon their common sense in order to participate in society? Are we telling ourselves that it is safe to go to the grocery store? It is safe to go to the theater. It is safe to go out and be within six feet of each other as long as we wear a mask. That's ludicrous. That's insane. That doesn't make any sense. It's not even what we've been told for the last six months. There's no consistency. There's no uniformity. There's no reliability. There's no repetition. There is no foundation for the quote unquote "science" that's surrounding this, that's underlying it. Trust the experts. Trust the experts when they're telling us the exact opposite of what they told us six months ago? What is this, day 260 of 14 days to flatten the curve? At some point, this starts to strain credulity.
Three minutes is up.
That was not three minutes. I have my clock going. But I'll stop anyway.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, this is Dr. Jelaine Zink. I'm a postdoc at Notre Dame. And, oh, and my address is 212 North Scott Street, South Bend. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thanks.
Say head witch.
So I just want to echo what's been previously said as far as following expert opinions. I want to thank Dr. Bob and also Dr. Fox, who both put in a lot of work into looking at these public ordinances. As a scientist, I know that listening to the experts is definitely something we should do. And yes, things have changed in the past few months, but this pandemic is new and this pandemic has more and more numbers to work with. And as someone who has done statistics, statistics change when we have those higher numbers and more power with those statistical analyses. So what is being said now is based on a much larger data set. So it makes sense that those have changed. And following the experts within our community is so important to getting that curve flattened, which I know we wanted it to be flattened in 14 days back when this whole thing started. But that all has to come down to people taking personal responsibility to do the right thing. And unfortunately, that hasn't happened. So these kind of ordinances unfortunately should get passed so that we know that people are going to take that personal responsibility. And yeah, I would like it to not be something that has to be mandated. But at this point, we need to take this action. And I hope this mandate passes because unfortunately, we can't necessarily trust personal responsibility. It needs to be mandated from the experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Jennifer Towers. 50575 Trails North, Granger, Indiana. May I proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
Just repeat your first name again, please.
Sure, Jennifer Towers.
Thank you.
I'm a person who qualifies for a medical exemption by the health department. The first time I put on a mask, I was at my son's doctor's appointment. Masks weren't mandatory yet, and I was being required to put one on. I felt like I was being suffocated. I couldn't breathe. I don't sleep with blankets over my head. I can't swim underwater. I have dealt with some anxiety in the past, but this was different. I was at my son's doctor's appointment, having a full blown anxiety attack as I clawed at the mask, struggling to breathe, dizzy, heart racing and panicked. I worried about the possibility of a mask mandate in May, so I contacted my personal doctor to see if he would write me a note for the exemption. He was aware of my previous anxiety and I told his nurse about my anxiety attack. And I was told, no, wear the mask. The second time I wore a loose scarf for an orthopedic appointment that I had, as soon as the doctor and the nurse practitioner saw me struggling, they encouraged me to take it off. I am a mother of six children, all whom I homeschool. I run my own small business out of my house. I did not expect to have this problem. My husband has worked out of the home this entire year, in fact, more hours than usual to keep his business afloat. I do the shopping. I shop for my family, I shop for my business. And we, as a family, we go to church on Sunday. I don't wear a mask. I socially distance. I wash my hands. I stay home when I'm sick. I politely tell stores that I have a medical exemption and they, for the most part, politely nod. Recently, I've had several experiences at unnamed stores. The first experience that I had was I entered a store and I had a manager running and screaming at me and to all those around, unfortunately, that I must wear a mask. I politely told her I had a medical exemption as the entire store watched. The second time I was having a transaction which required a manager to come over. And as we waited for the manager, another employee with disinfecting spray passed by and pointed it at me. She didn't realize I saw her and the cashier laughed. The last time a cashier asked if I had a mask and I said, no. She told me to fill my own cart. And when I was finished, I quickly left because the situation was awkward. But I realized I had left my receipt behind. And as I turned around to get it, I heard her telling a customer that I didn't have a mask, so she wasn't going to bother to tell me that I had left my receipt or do anything about it. The current bill requires doctor's notes, which I cannot get from my own doctor, and continues to pit businesses against customers. If this bill passes, I know I will continue to see a lack of charity from businesses and even hostility as I'm seen as a threat to businesses. When you see a person not wearing a mask, maybe assume they have a legitimate reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner Castellini?
Yes, whoever said Commissioner Castellini? Yes, you're being heard.
Okay, my name is Susan Lehman. I live in Mission Waca at 351 Edgewater Drive. I actually have a couple of questions. Is there a renewal date or an end date for this bill?
Ms. Lehman, this is public comments, it's not a question and answer time.
All right. I have not heard if there is an end date. I would really highly question this if there is not an end date. Also, I have not read the bill, so I don't know if there's a difference in the size of business. But I'm going to take a little bit different approach in how I'm viewing this. For women, I'll see how things will really be much different than what they are, except for a small percentage of people who are not wearing masks and are irritating people. Mostly, I'm seeing a lot of people wearing masks. I'm seeing a lot of businesses wearing them. I'm seeing, I haven't been in any restaurant. I haven't seen, I don't know that I've seen any business where masks are not being worn by the employees. So the tack that I'm going to take and what I'm going to say is that, number one, I think we're denying that this virus is going to have its way. It's going to work itself through the community. And we might be able to affect whether who gets it or when someone gets it by the kind of contact they have. When I'm working with people in our business, with my kids or in a school as a teacher, I always took the tack that to inspire people, to give them information, to let them make decisions, to help guide them to good decisions versus coercing them. We are all so demoralized right now. 2020, we laugh about it, but we're demoralized. And being coerced by our leaders is not helpful. One thing that I observed in the last two weeks, and I actually sent this in a letter to Governor Holcomb. What I noticed was as the virus was picking up and becoming much more pervasive and more and more people were getting sick and I knew more people, people around me were starting to make decisions to not gather as much. Organizations that I was in were beginning to pick up Zoom meetings again and versus meeting in person. And we felt empowered doing those things. Being coerced by another law, another regulation, by leaders who know and have facts, who think that we are not capable of taking care of ourselves. And yes, there's always going to be stupidity. There's going to be stupidity even if you have more laws. So I would challenge you to lead us by giving us information, by giving us things that we need to help us make good decisions, help us to help the people that need help, who are more vulnerable, for those in life who cannot get this virus. I would challenge you to lead us in that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will also note that there is a clause in the ordinance that the county council will hold a public hearing in April of 2021 to readdress this. So anyway, so next person, please.
Commissioner Castellini, my name is Rachel Tomas Morgan. If I might please address the commissioners.
Feel free.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rachel Tomas Morgan. I reside at 114 Chapin Street in South Bend and I have offices on the fourth floor of the county city building. I speak to you today as a resident of South Bend and St. Joe County and also and also as a member-at-large in the City of South Bend's Common Council. I ask you simply to pass Bill fifty-eight twenty today. On Monday, November ninth, South Bend's Common Council passed a resolution in support of the Medical Education Foundation's open letter to elected officials encouraging passage of ordinances related to face masks, hand washing, and social distancing. It seems to me that finding businesses between fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars to enforce the ordinance is a small price to pay versus being ordered to close down. As you know, this ordinance is about keeping businesses open, the safety of workers, and securing the confidence of consumers who want to support businesses. As stewards of this county, I know you don't need to be reminded that numbers in the county are soaring, and it will continue to do so without serious mitigation and enforcement. While I would have hoped for swifter and even stronger action this summer, it is not too late. I ask you to please respectfully pass Bill fifty-eight twenty today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, this is Brandon Bumbach. I'm at one two zero three two Timberline Trace North, Ranger, Indiana. Um, well, to previous comments, we cannot trust personal responsibility. Really, wow, thanks, token PhD. Um, also, I love the guy wandering around a private business and bothering them who just happen to have a copy of the ordinance in his pocket. At least he was honest that he's just selfish, caring about this rule because he's elderly and therefore everyone else should bend over. But down to the real stuff, the amendments were not voted upon directly, oops.
I object to the insults, thank you.
Whatever. Um, the amendments were not voted upon directly that you guys are supposedly looking at? You're looking at an amended copy that was not officially amended? So I guess we're just going to ignore the miscarriage of legal process in favor of this panic? Also, more importantly, I can find no explicit statement allocating remotely this power among the powers of either the county council or the commissioners. I've been going through Indiana code here. So despite popular ignorance that you can vote into law that which you simply will to be law, if you pursue this, it would be nice to have evidence that you have the ability to do it. Our governor was denied it by his own attorney general. Why do you think you have this ability? The Tenth Amendment states, "The power is not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states or reserved to the states respectively or to the people." This seems kind of like one of those people powers here. Where legally does the council believe it derives this power? And if you vote for such an incursion, do you really think you deserve this power? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else wish to speak?
Um, I'd like to speak, if that's okay?
That is okay.
Thank you. Alexandra Grove, I live at twenty-four twenty-eight Lincoln Way West in South Bend. Um, so my, my grandfather joined the United States Air Force for two reasons, to be able to fly planes and to protect the American freedoms. He was stationed in Greenland, Germany, and Afghanistan, and he fought in the Vietnam War. He loved this country with his whole life. He's buried at the Fort McPherson Cemetery in Nebraska, along with more than ten thousand men and women who gave their life for this country. And I wonder what it is that they and the other one million two hundred sixty thousand American war dead would say if they saw how casually we've given up rights and freedoms. They and my grandfather knew how important it was to protect the freedom of religion, freedom of association, freedom of speech, and freedom of assembly. They and my grandfather realized the importance of fighting and accepting death. They knew full well that they themselves would never, at least not in this life, enjoy those same freedoms. But they knew that if they did not make that sacrifice, then those freedoms would not be enjoyed by their children and their children's children. They died two hundred forty-six years ago and ten years ago so that we, their children, could go to church, celebrate Thanksgiving, watch Notre Dame play football, visit museums, listen to concerts, shake a stranger's hand. Hundreds of thousands of men and women died for us. And what have we done with their sacrifice and their family's sacrifice? This particular bill has many things wrong with it. But one of the most glaring and egregious is that there is no religious exemption. Both Elkhart and La Porte County have at least included that in their mask mandate. Without the protected, protection for religious freedom, this bill spits on the graves of my grandfather and those one million two hundred sixty thousand heroes who are willing to sacrifice it all for us. The question at hand is not whether you force wearing of masks or not. The question rather is what you personally risk, what you will personally risk to ensure freedom. What we know from history, from the experts of history, is that any freedom you don't protect will get taken away. And we, as a nation, have already lost so much this year. You cannot allow the freedom of religion to be the next casualty. You must be brave, and you must stand strong. You must stare death in the face like those soldiers, if not for yourself, then for the children. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Is there anyone else?
Um, I'd like, I'd like to speak, please, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Justin Grove. Uh, I also live at twenty-four twenty-eight Lincoln Way West and in South Bend. Um, you know, uh, having listened to Mr. Castel and Mr. Thomas speak, I, I am somewhat reluctant to believe um, that we're going to prevail um, in convincing you uh, to vote no against this ordinance. Um, however, uh, I wanted to point out that um, my concerns are actually identical to your concerns, I believe, in many ways. Um, you speak of generational uh, knowledge, Mr. Thomas. Um, generational knowledge consists in two manners. Um, one is this sort of scientific knowledge that can be written down in a book and read uh, five years later or ten years later or twenty years later. Um, but there's also practical knowledge uh, which is generational. And that generational knowledge has to be passed on, not just uh, from generation to generation, but from year to year within a society. Um, it's how people learn how to interact with each other, how people learn how to treat each other, how people learn how to disagree politically uh, without turning to violence, how people learn to do a lot of things. Um, what this pandemic has done, um, what our response to the pandemic has done, because the pandemic itself has not done it, right? What the, what our response to the pandemic has done is put a barrier in that transmission of uh, generational knowledge to the next generation. And that, along with all kinds of the things which you mentioned, such as uh, increased rates in opioid use, increased rates in suicide, increased rates in domestic abuse, um, increased uh, just general laze miserableness, right? Um, they all have to be balanced against the level of death. That's the generational knowledge we have up to this point, right? People die of the flu every year. I realize COVID is more dangerous than the flu. I don't want to question that, and I also don't want to question the efficacy of masks. That's not my point. Um, the point is that every year, up until last year, we said to ourselves, "A certain percentage of people dying is worth it" in order to pass on other things that are also of value. We have said this, and we've said, and, and humans have said this literally for millions of years, right? And all of a sudden, we seem to be changing. And I, I talked to Councilman File about this, and what he said to me was that "These procedures are worthwhile if we save five people out of the two hundred and seventy-one thousand that live in the county." That is such a ridiculously small percentage. It's not that I don't value those five people's lives, right? But we, I also value other things. If we create this generational knowledge, the generational knowledge you're proposing, right? If we take it and run with it moving forward, then I don't see uh, this sort of behavior ever stopping, right? Because you're right, something comes up every five years, not just like nine eleven and um, and, and, and things similar to that, or forest fires, but diseases, right? We've had H one N one, we've had SARS, we've had West Nile. There's no reason why we shouldn't give this level of response to every um, pandemic-like or uh, novel virus that shows up in the future. And I don't want to keep doing it forever. At some point, we have to stop. Um, I have routinely, I, well, routinely might be strong, but I have, I've been asking people in government and in the Health Department, um, "Where is the line?" Right? No one has given me an answer yet. How many people does the mask ordinance need to save in order to be worth it? If you're about to vote on it.
Time is up, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Man, man, I, I understand my time is up. I just want to say, like, that question, right? No one has answered. If you aren't prepared to answer it, then you're not prepared to vote. And I, and I just would appreciate it if someone knows. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to go. Um, my name is John Getz. I live at one nine three seven Churchill Drive. Uh, just want to confirm that you can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to start a couple, couple of quick refutations. Uh, Dr. Einzers and a couple of the Notre Dame folks. I've mentioned that there's definitive, well, Dr. Einzers called it definitive proof. I have provided on a number of occasions citations from published journal articles from the last twenty years showing that in fact, there is not definitive proof that masks stop the virus, okay? The, I, I can provide you those citations. I can send them to you after the meeting. They exist, okay? You cannot deny that.
Anyone else? I think, yes, I'd like to go.
John, John, hold a minute, please. There's someone talking in the background. If you're not John or Commissioner Castel, please have your mute button on. John, continue, please.
Thank you, sir. Um, uh, I'd also like to point out that in America, we are not a country ruled by experts. I know that a lot of people uh, look to experts for guidance on how we decide things, but ultimately, we are a country ruled by a constitution, and we need to respect that constitution. Okay, so when it comes to passing laws such as this, this sort of law runs full over quite a few rights, all right? That means that it must be subject to strict legal scrutiny, which means that it requires both a compelling reason and it requires a narrow tailoring, which I would argue means that if there is, there, if there exists a better thing to do, then it is not sufficiently narrow tailored, narrowly tailored. But I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't say that for sure. I'd also like to point out that the argument that all the experts agree on this is patently false. If you have not heard of it, there is this thing called the Great Barrington Declaration. It has been co-signed by thirty-five thousand medical practitioners. And they believe that not only are lockdowns bad, but the whole process of mandating masks is the wrong approach to take. There is a much better approach that can be taken, which is to focus our attention on the people who are actually vulnerable. Those who are young and healthy have a very, very, very low likelihood of suffering any long-lasting consequences, including death, from the COVID nineteen pandemic. And the only way we are going to get over this pandemic is by reaching herd immunity, whether or not that herd immunity is reached by the natural spread of the disease or by the presence of a vaccine, which maybe we'll have in a few more months. But the fact of the matter is, the only way for us to escape it is from herd immunity. If we want to protect the elderly and the sick, then the elderly and the sick should stay at home, and all of the young, non-vulnerable people should go about their daily lives. And if they get sick, then they get sick. But they will not die from the disease. They will then develop the herd immunity in the community, and then all, once that has reached critical mass, we will start seeing case numbers drop. And at that point, then those who are vulnerable can rejoin the community. That would be the best approach, and that is what they um, talk about in the Great Barrington Declaration. There's a lot more in there. I can't go over it in three minutes, but I want to bring this to everybody's attention. There's, there are other avenues that we could pursue that may actually give us better results without all of this running roughshod over people's individual liberties and rights. Not to mention, you know, my personal issues with it because I have an illness that prevents me from being able to wear a mask and has led to basically continuous harassment when I go out in the public. Um, and then finally, okay, if I'm out of time, that's fine. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to comment. My name is Rochelle Gibler. I live at five two seven four five Sierra Drive, South Bend, Indiana. And I'd like to follow up um, with what John said. I'm, I'm sure all of the experts have um, their articles, scientific articles um, at their fingertips. Uh, but it's important to just briefly go over the elephant in the room, which is the size of the virus and what the masks will filter and not filter out, whether in fact they're effective. So the SARS COVID-two virus um, is eighty to one hundred and twenty nanometers in size. The most protective mask, the N ninety-five, filters out ninety-five percent of particulate matter over three hundred nanometers. Uh, so masks with cotton synthetic fabric will not filter out a virus or a tiny virus-laden droplets. Overtime masks collect pathogens on their damp, dirty surfaces, which are inhaled into the lungs. In a uh, article in Safety Science in September twenty twenty, they found that they did a study on uh, used petri dishes and, and uh, and found that cloth masks had forty to ninety percent instantaneous penetration levels. That means the virus is so small, it goes right through it, right through the cloth mask. The cloth mask is a hygienic barrier. It does nothing, absolutely nothing. And in fact, there's lots of evidence that shows that masks can make you sick. The medical mask, however, has about forty-four percent of particle penetration. So that's a fifty-fifty program. Um, OSHA has determined that the oxygen, oxygen range um, for humans is, should be between nineteen point five and twenty-three point five percent. Less than nineteen point five is not safe for workers. The percentage of oxygen inside a mask measures seventeen point four percent within several seconds of wearing. So perhaps an OSHA violation could be in order. If you look at surgeons who wear masks from two hours to ten hours, you find that after a couple of hours, that these bacteria start to build up. They complain of foggy thinking that, because the oxygen level decreases. They complain of headaches. They even have to get medication for this. Some have reported tremors. So after this was concluded and looking at the petri dishes on two, four, six, and eight hours, this study suggested that masks should be changed every two hours. Now who changes a mask every two hours? And most of these people are wearing cloth masks, which do absolutely nothing. And the other really important thing, which I found, I, I just couldn't believe when I read this, is that when masks are typically worn improperly, are, and are well-documented to cause harm. They are made of, through a process called floral polymerization, a process that combines carbon and fluoride atoms. There's a U.S. patent to allow manufacturers to use PTFE as a filter in commercial masks. Breathing these for extended period of time causes lung cancer.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
That's unfortunate.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, hello. Oh. Sorry, was someone else speaking too? Sorry, I'm uh, Maureen Getz. I live at one nine three seven Churchill Drive, South Bend, Indiana. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I would um, like to speak out against uh, the fine bill. Um, I got a chemistry degree from Notre Dame. I actually went to the med school um, for three semesters before I decided to leave to be a parent. Uh, well, to, to get married first and then become a parent. Um, but basically, a lot of my concerns about the masks and distancing have been as a parent. So that's kind of my expert expertise, if you will. Um, I would also like to start by saying that I find it really insulting and rude um, when people who are for the mask bill say that um, you know, we, people who are against it don't care and we're not trying to do our part in uh, battling the coronavirus. I think um, we have been trying to do our part since the very beginning, uh, doing things like, uh, you know, that have been more um, promoted from the very beginning, like using hand sanitizer, washing our hands. promoted from the very beginning, like using hand sanitizer, washing our hands, staying away from elderly relatives, especially if we're sick. I understand that there's asymptomatic spread as well. So there's a certain amount of caution that you should take regardless. But yeah, I mean, we are trying to do our part here. Um, in my experience, the very first people that I heard were against, um, a lot of these measures, including masks, were doctors or nurses or other people who work in the healthcare profession that I knew personally. And that was, um, interesting to me at the very least. Uh, I know that there's been some talk about, oh, well, we have to wear masks so that we don't have to shut everything down again. But the World Health Organization already said that we should not be shutting down anymore. It is doing more harm than good to shut down. So I don't think that it is appropriate at all to basically threaten businesses with being shut down over the masks when the World Health Organization is already saying not to do any more shutdowns. I think that even fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fines per day for violations could be considered almost like a shutdown measure for individual businesses as well because a lot of businesses have really small, like, margins when it comes to, like, profits and things. I know that it's already a strain on a lot of businesses to have the reduced capacity restrictions that Governor Holcomb has put in place. And so I do feel like it could shutter businesses pretty easily to have these fines in place. And that is not what the World Health Organization is saying that they want. Um, also, I mean, as a, as a parent, I've been trying to shelter my kids as much as I can from universal masking stuff. And a lot of that means staying at home a lot of the time instead of, like, signing up for gymnastics and things like that. But I, I do know, as I have, um, a background as a BCBA, an autism therapist, and one of the things that I learned, uh, through my autism therapy work and, uh, my education is that-
Yes, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Commissioner, this is Bill Lee, 15444 Durham Way, East in Granger. I just wanted to shed, shed a little bit of light on a, a couple of statistics. And I know everyone has statistics, but this is a recent report out of WSPT this morning. And I want to make sure that either pro or against, uh, if you're a doctor, if you're a lawyer, if you're on the board, that we're taking a holistic look as we come up with a strategy in St. Joe County to defeat this virus. I've read a recent report from, uh, someone on the panel here that seventy percent of the elderly care facilities where most of our coronavirus is coming from. Another statistic that WSPT released this morning, that about fifteen percent of Notre Dame's eighty-seven-hundred undergraduate students have gotten the coronavirus so far this semester, about thirteen-hundred in total. Something that is more concerning to me and what I want to make sure we're not looking this, looking at this through a stovepipe approach, is that four out of every ten Notre Dame students are experiencing moderate to serious levels of stress and anxiety. Students told the reporters that they or their friends are experiencing feelings of loneliness, isolation, anxiety, and depression, and it looks like there's no help coming their way. This might be an opportunity where we can come together and find a way to help not only the residents of St. Joe County, but the ambassadors of St. Joe County, those students at the University of Notre Dame. I just want to make sure that we're doing the right approach, and enough time has been given, even though this has been out since May, that we are giving this a holistic approach to the problem and not simply putting fines in place to, to help and what someone might think is, is the right way to approach it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak. Hello?
Please continue.
Uh, this is Darlene Chabot. I live at 13367 East Seventh Street in Mishawaka. Um, I am very concerned. Um, I am definitely against these, these fines. I think that you're treating people like criminals by doing, by, um, issuing fines. The claim that citizens are not complying is really untrue. I am out there. I am in stores. I'm a merchandiser. I'm in Menards. I'm in Meyer. I never see anyone without a mask. So to treat people like they're, you know, like, they're not doing what they're supposed to is, 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 that claim is not true. And, um, and because of that, okay, everyone is, ninety percent of people are wearing masks. We still have a spike. So my question is, are these masks doing what they say they do? And like another, a number of speakers have already said, there is question as to whether these masks even work. And they're, and, and to say that there is asymptomatic cases, that is, has not been proven. I also have a concern about my civil liberties that are definitely at risk here, um, especially the religious. We need a religious exemption if this thing, if the ordinance goes through. We need a religious exemption. Most counties have it. Um, and we definitely should have that. And I'm very concerned about what has happened to us. I mean, I'm over sixty years old and what's happened to our freedoms? This is scaring me tremendously. We should be protecting the vuln, vulnerable, yes, but let everyone else live their lives. This is what has been done in the past with all our other pandemics and everything. We just let, take care of the vulnerable, and then we go about our lives, and that's what you have to do. Otherwise, you have problems like these students at Notre Dame and people that are committing suicide. We are, we are America, and if these rights and freedoms are at risk, this is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I'll go. My name is, if, if you guys can hear me.
We can.
Okay, great. Uh, my name is Anya Seebolt. I live in South Bend on nineteen-twenty-seven Hartman Drive. Um, and thank you, everybody, for your time, for listening. So first of all, it seems like the thing to do is to throw out your scientific credentials, as if you have more authority on the subject. But at the same time, you're throwing out studies that disagree with your stance. So I think that's interesting. But to follow suit, I am a fourth-year doctorate student at Notre Dame in applied and computational mathematics and statistics. Uh, I specifically study mathematics in the medical field when it comes to blood flow. So if you need a scientific credential, there you go. Um, I think to dismiss things as conspiracy theory, uh, when you disagree with someone does a disservice to people. Uh, especially, as I said before, there are scientific people that come out and have differing views that say masks don't work. Um, not to mention science is fallible, especially when the data is flawed. So I don't think anybody has mentioned the data that we're looking at. Um, science is only as good as its data. We have repeat cases that are going into the count. So I don't know if we have a hundred million cases. Some of those are repeats from the same people that took multiple tests. We also have deaths that are being related to COVID, even though they were morbidly obese or they were terminally ill with stage four cancer. These things should be questioned. Um, I think the takeaway there is that there are conflicting studies. I don't want to get into the science of things, um, because if you have an open mind and you are a scientist, you should try to get to the root of the truth there. And, uh, as I said, the data is flawed. I would rather talk about my grandma, who was born in the nineteen twenties in Russia. She had a beautiful, loving family fairy tale, but communism was there. Um, they didn't believe in individuality, individual rights. They believed in the collective, what's best for everybody. And anyone who disagreed with them, they had to do, deal with communist-imposed law. Uh, my grandma, in her town, the communists came in, and when they tried to recruit her brother, they shot him in front of her because he disagreed with joining their cause. They shot him in the head in front of my grandma. They took her father and sent him to a gulag. This is my family. Why? Why, you might ask? Because they had different viewpoints. They had different opinions. They wanted to do what was best for the collective, and they sought their own science, their own beliefs, and they did what they thought was essential. Uh, they left the women there. I, I couldn't tell you why. It didn't seem like they had a conscience. My grandma eventually went to, uh, labor camp in Nazi Germany. So that was also where you were dehumanized and subhuman, of course, because of different viewpoints again. Uh, so thank you to people like Alexandra Groves' grandfather you spoke earlier, because you helped release my grandma from a labor camp. Um, so what does this have to do with us? Just really final thing. Uh, right now, we're just finding people. This is just a mask. This is just to help others. That's what they thought in communist Russia. It started as a thought to make things better for everyone. Maybe it was just a fine at first, a few days in jail, but okaying this leads to extremism. And the thought that your truth should be forced onto everyone is just ridiculous, and you are infringing on liberties and freedoms. And you, I heard Hitler mentioned. I mean, he had his own science. I could go on for days there. Um, uh, one, I'm sorry, one last thing. Um-
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, yes, I'd like to speak.
Please continue.
I wanted to thank everyone for, uh, giving a lot of viewpoints that I wouldn't have had to-
Address for the record.
Oh, um, 52025 Woodridge Drive, South Bend.
What's your name?
Nicole Clutnotti.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and yes, I'm thankful for the people that gave a lot of their statistics, um, because I wouldn't have had time in these three minutes. But just a couple of my concerns are the lack of, um, well, I wanted to point out that anyone can find an expert on anything they would like to agree with. We live in an age of information, so we can all say we trust the experts. But I have happened to read many studies and, um, published studies of the concerns of breathing in our own carbon dioxide for long periods of time and the, um, harm that these masks are doing to our immune system, the breakdown of not getting healthy antigens, um, into our body and how that breaks down our immune system and possibly is the cause of our recent outbreak of COVID. For, um, we've been wearing masks around here. Over ninety percent of people wear masks everywhere I go. Um, and yet we're still seeing a rise in cases. So to fine those that are trying their best to do, um, what is best for their family and theirselves, uh, I think is very tyrannical and, um, unconstitutional. Um, I also agree that there should be religious exemptions in there because that's what this country was founded upon. Um, yeah, I just, um, I've seen firsthand, everyone wear them. I've seen firsthand that they're not working. So to fine people, I think, is wrong. So I dearly hope and pray that you will not vote on this fine mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Mike. I'd like to speak. Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Sure.
Hey, uh, Micahfan, uh, 8150 West Douglas, Mishawaka. Uh, I was, uh, inspired by that lady's, uh, grandparents from Russia. My grandparents came from Russia. They defected from Russia to Paris. That's where my mother was born. And anyway, they defected for a reason. They, they, they left because of this kind of nonsense you guys are trying to pull here. Um, and this, this comes down to the big word, trust. You know, this just comes over and over again, all of these, these issues of trust. Where is the proof of this mask working? There is no proof. We've not, we haven't seen it. Uh, if anything, it's anecdotal, and, uh, you can give just as many anecdotal, uh, uh, I guess, uh, examples of it not working. Uh, does it save lives? Again, it's another false premise. Um, I mean, there's a ninety-nine-point-nine percent recovery rate here. So why are we jumping through all these, uh, crazy hoops when you got such a gigantic recovery rate? Um, flu is, uh, gone, doesn't exist anymore, which is crazy. Basically, what's happening is all flu is being, uh, categorized as COVID now. So, um, so trust is a big problem. And I think the strategy that has been, uh, you know, foisted on us, the lockdown strategy and the masks, um, is a, is a false one. It, it has not worked. I mean, it's clearly not working. And so that's what I would encourage the, uh, the Health Department to, to really consider. Uh, that Barrington Declaration, that is a very impressive group of doctors, a list, a gigantic list of doctors. Um, and they agree that we need a different strategy. We don't need to be fining people on this old strategy. That doesn't work. Um, and I think the worst part of it all is the social upheaval that's being created. I mean, you have people on this call that are talking about, hey, you're doing this in this, this particular store and, and having, uh, people yell at them. I had some people yelling at me outside the other day. Outside, I was working on my bicycle, for crying out loud. You know, where's your mask? I'm like, well, I'm outside by myself, working on a bicycle. Um, it's just crazy, the social upheaval that has been created by you guys, considering this, this whole mask business, this fine business. And let me give you the perfect example of the social upheaval. I'm going to read you something. Um, there's a, a retired sheriff, one of the most prestigious, well, well-known retired sheriffs, um, in Milwaukee, David Clark. This is what he said. David Clark has a tremendous amount of influence in law enforcement. This is what he said. Talk about social upheaval. He said this. Here's the political side of this. Democrats still politicizing COVID. This is why I encourage mass resistance to all government orders over this. We have been duped by this scare-driven response. That's from David Clark, one of the most respected law enforcement veterans in the United States. He was responding to Jim Jordan, one of the most respected congressmen out of Ohio, who feels exactly the same way. So basically, what you're, what you're doing is you're creating this social upheaval, while people are going to resist your measures. So I think you should stop it. You should just stop it and try a different strategy. I think there's been some good ideas put forth today. There's a lot of good ideas out there. Um, and many doctors do not agree with the St. Joe County Health Department. And I think many doctors have good ideas that could, that'd help you out of this mess. You know, how about checking people's nutrient stats?
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I will ask a third and final time before I close the public hearing portion.
I would just like to make one comment as I spoke earlier, Steve Miller again.
Well, actually, I do, I do, I do not believe you are able to speak again.
Right.
I'm sorry? I just want to make a comment to the whole thing, and hopefully everybody-
Steve, you've had your chance.
Yeah, we, we do not. This is, unfortunately, this is, this is less conversational, but everyone gets their chance, but does not get an additional chance.
I would like to-
Okay.
If I may?
Go ahead.
My name is Anna Gill. I reside at 10175 Westcott Drive, Granger, Indiana. I'm totally against this bill, uh, for many reasons that everyone spoke out already. Um, there's no need for me to go over that again, but as a business owner, I also would like to bring up another point. Um, this bill's complaint-driven. The la, this is the second time I spoke out against this, and after the first time, we had three complaints against our business from not our regular customers. So I have a problem with how it's even done. Um, where, where do we draw the line? There's, there could be people that, um, could be vindictive, or you could fire an employee and they could do something. I just have a problem with the whole thing, and I am totally against it. That's all I need to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Going once? Going twice? I will now close the public hearing portion of this. Um, I guess, Dr. Bob, is there anything you want to say then in, in summation?
Thank you, Commissioner Costelli. Uh, the only, uh, comment, uh, that I would make, uh, is that, um, I, I, I agree with the, uh, couple of individuals who alluded to the fact that it's inappropriate to, uh, uh, shame individuals who do not, uh, wear a mask. The, there are reasons, and individuals have, uh, medical exceptions, uh, to wearing a- a mask, that, uh, that provision was, uh, in the original order, it has stayed in the order and, uh, and is part of the ordinance. And, uh, moving forward, I certainly, uh, would not condone the actions of anyone who, uh, was attempting to shame somebody for not wearing a mask. And, uh, as it relates to, um, the ADA, um, I want to say, just respond to that because it seems to be coming up on occasion. Let me see if I can find it.
Doctor, talk more clearly into the phone, please.
Yeah, the Americans with, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, sir.
The Americans with Disability Act does allow restrictions when an individual would pose a direct threat to the health or safety of others. The COVID-19 pandemic meets the direct threat standard, so a business is on solid ground to require customers to wear face masks or covering when entering, uh, their premises. The business may ask the unmasked customer she is, or he is unable to wear a mask because of a disability, though the business cannot inquire as to the nature of the disability. If the customer's answer is yes, the business should make reasonable accommodations for the customer. However, such a request for reasonable accommodation comes with a caveat that a disabled person's request cannot cause undue hardship to the employer or fundamentally change the overall operation of the business. My only other comment, Commissioner, Commissioner Costelli is, uh, relates to, uh, views and perspectives on freedom. I previously shared with you in an email, uh, my personal views on that, and I will not repeat them at this point, but you have, uh, you should have them, uh, in your possession. Thank you so much and I appreciate your willingness to listen to the many comments.
Thank you, Doctor. Uh, Counselor, there, a clarification I would like to ask of you is, there, there have been some comments, both today and, uh, in other formats as well, about the legal authority of the Health Department to take the action that they're taking. Could you please weigh on that for a moment?
Thank you, Commissioner Costelli. It's my opinion and the opinion of the attorney for the St. Joseph County Council that the Health Department could enact these things and, and, and take these steps, really in absence of any action by the council and commissioners. It sounds like the Health Department, in an effort to be deliberate about its approach and to work with the, the executive and legislative branch here in St. Joseph County, has decided to avail itself to, um, this process, but, um, the, the actions of the Health Department are well within its rights and, um, to deal with the pandemic as it exists in our community right now. That's my opinion.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, and finally, before I call for a vote, are there any comments that either Commissioner would like to make at this time?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Counselor, just also, I'd like you to point out that with the pandemic, there are emergency powers and that the county council created this ordinance under their power of home rule authority.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure what the rationale was, the, the, the council you, you did, you used, but, um, it's, it's powers that were granted to the Health Department that are being ratified by the legislative and executive bodies and, as you said, in the absence of a statute or law that says a local unit of government may not act in a certain arena, typically those unit of government, the local unit of government, the county in this case, has the ability to, to take actions it deems appropriate because it has home rule.
Yes, thank you. And that's us stressing the home rule issue and that when, some people earlier referenced that the powers are left to the people, that is the home rule authority. Doesn't mean every single individual who can create a country in their own parcel of land, it's, it's, there's still rule of law and democracy is obviously alive and well. This isn't Russia, which as far as I'm concerned is occupied Poland. This isn't Russia where people go out and gulags get shot and all my relatives were murdered in World War II and before. And my father fought in the Army Air Corps, before the Air Force. But there is no gulag, there's no one being shot here, this is a due process of the people's speech. And it's that democracy that has dragged this out since May. It's that democracy that is watered down, what would have been a strong, good ordinance that would have provided a great deal of protection to everybody to this watered-down version, which won't be as strong. It's sad again to hear people talk about the level of deaths, that a certain number of deaths is acceptable. I addressed earlier my concern about the religious issue, which I raised before, uh, in previous commission meetings and spoke about earlier today. And again, I apologize to doctors and the Health Department for what, uh, they've gone through. As I said earlier, the, some of the attacks on them have been very cruel and inappropriate. Nobody has seen everything I've read, no one has heard everything I've heard other citizens saying, but it is inappropriate. And, uh, so I just let that be said and I, again, uh, if this passes forward, it takes immediately measures. And I, I understand there's a sunset clause in April, Mr. Costelli mentioned earlier, and I'm also grateful that Mr. Commissioner Costelli mentioned the fact that right now the state ordinance is, there will be a mask in public places. There will be, uh, so this isn't even as strong as the current state policy. And that's all, being brief.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Fleming, any comments before I make mine and call for a vote?
Well, other than I'm just very happy that the Health Department is trying to keep our county healthy, but I don't think I'm gonna be for this, uh, because I don't think it's good that we find businesses and push mask ordinances, uh, because I don't think, again, that there's been no scientific evidence that masks really work. Um, so anyway, that's just a concern that I have, but I certainly want our Health Department to continue to help people stay as healthy as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. And my, I'll keep my comments brief. Um, this is not an easy decision, that this is, um, I, I truly appreciate all the folks who have spoken here today, who have reached you out by phone, email, um, and text. I apologize if I was not able to personally respond to everyone because there's been an overwhelming, um, response to this, both for and against. But as I said, this is not an easy decision. Um, but I think it is, um, an important one that we continue to take steps to do what we can to keep our county healthy and also to keep our county open. I mean, there's no, th, these are not threats that are being made, but these are real realizations. I spoke with, um, executives from a neighboring county today and they are, depending upon, regardless of what the Board of Commissioners do with this ordinance, they're looking to pass a similar ordinance, maybe a stricter ordinance, um, in the coming weeks because they are concerned with the, uh, increased activity. As has been said, you, for every study you find that, that says the masks are not helpful, you can find a study that says masks are. So I, I, I'm not smart enough to, to do that math and to, so I have to trust on the experts of our local Health Department and also our local, um, healthcare institutions as well, who have, who have been pushing for us to do anything that we can to help slow the curve or slow the, the growth of, of COVID in our area. One comment that was made that I cannot agree with more is masks are not the answer, that they're not the end-all, be-all. We must continue to wear face coverings when appropriate, wash hands, keep physical distancing, limit the group of, that we interact with, to, to those folks who are kind of inside our bubble. Those are the things that we did very early on that were effective. As the economy opened and everything else opened, opened back up, those things kind of slowly fell by the wayside. And I understand, I'm tired of wearing masks and face coverings, I'm tired of living a limited life compared to what we had a few months ago. I think it's important that we take the steps necessary to protect those most vulnerable and also our, our own family members. So once again, I, I will now call for a motion.
I make a motion that we have passed and accept County Council Organs eighty-five twenty in its entirety.
I second that. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, two to one. All right. Moving on to the Health Department, we have a request, approval of COVID-19 Screening and Specimen Collection Services Agreement with Beacon Health System, Inc.
Yes, this is Amy Rupe, Finance Manager for the Department of Health with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the County City Building. Before you, as a request for support to enter into a contract with Beacon Health Systems regarding, regarding COVID-19 screening, this is a grant that we received from the Indiana Department of Health in order to offer COVID-19 testing after normal business hours and on the weekends.
Any questions or comments?
Again, I think, Doctor, it is, uh, Ms. Rupe and the entire Department staff for the immense trouble and work they have to do. And again, here's a grant to help pay for some of these ridic, uh, high costs.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the COVID-19 Screening and Specimen Collection Services with Beacon Health System.
Second.
We have motion, a second. Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, Portage Manor, request approval of provider relief funding.
Hi, good morning, this is Robin Chaloner, Portage Manor, three zero one six Portage Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight. And, um, on September second, Cory, who is working with the, um, butter's office as a COVID administrator, um, I asked her to look into this provider relief fund, um, and it was, it's being administered through the, um, Health and Human Services Department. Um, and so we were awarded forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents. And so I'm asking that, um, I'm requesting approval for this provider relief funding.
Thank you, Robin. I want to, uh, also congratulate Robin and Cory for their, their hard work in trying to, to provide funding, uh, and, uh, get funding for Portage Manor during this. And also want to, uh, recognize Robin for the award that she won. Robin, what, uh, what was that award that you recently won?
Oh, thank you very much. That's very nice. It was a hero award.
Yeah. And I'd say congratulations too, Rob. Good job.
Big day unanimous, Robin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any que, any questions or comments regarding the request?
Uh, certainly, want to again compliment Robin and, and, and Councilman Nolan for helping this, uh, we're kind of approving it, uh, retroactive, which is fine with me under the case. And, uh, but I do have a question for Robin. Robin, I heard a rumor, I don't know if it's true or not, that, uh, you've been forced to house people that aren't paying, because I understand that most everybody there pays the Medicare, Medicaid, insurance, SSI, Social Security. Is, is, are, are, are you being forced to house anybody that is not paying because of COVID or non-COVID?
Um, so first, I want to just let you know, there's Cory, not Cory Nolan with the council who's helping, but Cory, the COVID administrator.
Oh, thank you.
Funding, so, um, but, uh, the question, um, are, am I being, are we being forced to house people who don't pay? Um, the county home has always taken in indigent people and, um, there's no forcing that, but we do have people residing with us who, um, are indigent and we receive no funds for them. We do try to work and get them on the program. We've always taken in homeless or underserved, that's what the county home does, we get no fund for them. So they live with us and we, we work to get them wrapped around with services and to get them on our state program. It can take three months to two years to get people on the program and, um, we take good care of them in the process.
I'm sure you take wonderful care of them and, um, they're certainly better in your hands than, than, than on the streets. And, uh, uh, hopefully, uh, there's more money or COVID available or maybe like the counties, as I understand, we're paying for hotels with cities out bend up in Roseland or something for homeless people or COVID, that hopefully there's some other angle that you can maybe get some more dollars or shift the expense some out.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this provider relief funding?
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to PSAP, first item, request approval of contract with Jewel Property Maintenance, LLC. You on, Ray?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
So Jewel Property Maintenance.
It's just.
Mr. Costelli, Mr. Schultz must have some kind of technical difficulty, uh, to expiate the matter. If it's all right, I'll just speak that it's a renewal of a current, of a historic contract for snow removal at the PSAP Center. There is no increase in cost, uh, but a first little comment, I'd say if we had an adequately supplied highways department, we could, uh, have this done in-house. But, uh, again, as there's more cuts in the highway department, I will support this measure as I've supported it in the past.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to renew this contract with Jewel Property Maintenance, LLC.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of contract with IMresponding.com.
Mr. Commissioner, considering that Mr. Schultz may still be in technical difficulties, he has presented a request to renew a three-year contract, it's a renewal of a current contract we already have with IMresponding, a mass notification system, uh, so that we can talk to police, fire, coroner, SWAT team, FAK team, uh, probably Homeland Security and a lot of other agencies that need to be notified of something immediately using modern technology. And I'd support this as I have in the past.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this contract with IAR.
Second.
Motion to second. Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, Purdue Extension, request approval of contractual service agreement with St. Joseph County.
Commissioner Costelli, I don't see anybody in the room, so I'll speak on behalf of 4H.
But, so is Rachel, kind of, she was gonna be on the call, I don't know if she's able to stay on?
I think.
Hi, I'm here, this is Rachel Rawls.
Yep. Go ahead, Rachel.
Hi, thank you. Um, this is Rachel Rawls, County Extension Director, um, for Purdue Extension. I work at one two five South Lafayette Boulevard on the second floor in South Bend, across from the County City Building. Um, I am meeting with you today to get the, um, uh, signatures for, um, our contractual services agreement, um, that we have with the county. And, um, this amount is for one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, um, well, one hundred, yeah, sorry, um, one hundred, oh my goodness, I can't do math this morning and I can't, uh, read apparently. So, um, hopefully you have it in front of you and this amount did not change, um, from last year, it stayed the same, and, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there in fact any questions?
Uh, well, I would thank, uh, thank her for her great diligence and work for the county. Purdue Extension is a, a great asset. The number she was looking for was a hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and it has not increased, uh, as she mentioned. And it's, you know, it's a state mandated payment we make for Purdue Extension, but we received ten times that in services from Purdue Extension. Uh, last time I checked, there was what, seventeen members paid for by Purdue University in your office, uh, and do great work for 4H. It's been a very difficult year for everybody with virus, especially with 4H, working with the children, the 4H program, um, Fair, and, um, you know, like everything else, hopefully this will bounce back.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the contractual service agreement with the Purdue Extension for St. Joseph County.
Second.
Motion to second. Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I'll go and give a quick thank you to Rachel. Um, she is very instrumental in helping us work with a local healthcare provider to, um, and, and working with the state to try and increase COVID testing in our county as well. So thank you for the role that you played in, in moving that along.
Thank you.
All right. Infrastructure planning and growth. First item is the consent agenda. I will note there's irrevocable letter of credit for the MICE, low, per review subdivision, section two. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second. Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of change order number one, RS nine two zero zero one S, miscellaneous road resurfacing rehabilitation on various roads, districts one, two, and three. three.
I don't think Commissioner Costelli can hear you through the mask. Please, uh.
I, I can. I can. So she is fine.
Department, uh, infrastructure planning and growth on the seventh and eleventh floors. Uh, before you is a change order number one. It is a request to decrease the original contract amount. It is also a credit to the project and is a savings of twenty thousand three hundred dollars to reflect your service engagement.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the change order for the miscellaneous road resurfacing rehabilitation on the various roads in the different districts.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of bid, request FEMA project number four-three-six-three-point-zero-six-R, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, SJC-HMG-two-zero-two-zero, and FEMA project number PDMC, PJ-zero-five-I-N-two-zero-one-eight-zero-zero-one, Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant Program, SJCPDM-two-zero-two-zero.
Before you is the notice of bidding and request to authorize advertisements to be presented on Friday, November twentieth and Friday, November twenty-seventh with a bid opening on the date.
Um, and this is for the demolition project?
Correct. This is the demolition property that has volunteers to.
And I, I know that, uh, probably I can file the county council's, uh, responsible bidder ordinance, but because it's federal grant money, we will be following Davis Bacon?
Uh, on this particular project, it actually, it follows St. Joseph County process.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve these bid advertisements.
Both, both projects, yes.
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, request approval of professional service proposal, the Antero Group Addendum number three, IEC Area Management Plan.
Good afternoon. Chris Brown, Economic Development Southwest, uh, with the Department of Economic Development Growth, offices on the seventh and northern floors. For you today is a proposal, uh, for a professional service, uh, agreement with the Antero Group, who's been doing a lot of the master planning work for the Indiana Enterprise Center. Uh, this addendum three will cover a couple of kind of final, uh, parts of this project, uh, kind of necessary updates for the IEC Area Management Plan, uh, ongoing maintenance for the IEC website, and an implementation of a communication protocol for ongoing public engagement. We've been obviously wanting to have public meetings regarding this plan, but due to COVID, it has been very difficult to understand what we can and what we can't do, uh, on pushing this plan out. So the not-to-exceed contract amount is disposable. We build on a timely material basis and not to exceed forty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, the redevelopment commission approved this proposal at its meeting on November tenth. That was approval of this proposal. Have any, is there any question?
Are there in fact any questions or comments?
Uh, my comments would be that, uh, uh, certainly is IEC related, which means that's just bad. B-A-D is spelled I-E-C. And, uh, this is more money thrown after more money. Antero Group is, uh, in the past, probably even this contract, has one contracts and no bids against their competitors. And now this is the third addendum for another almost fifty thousand dollars. How many more addendums will there be? And, you know, this is money that could have probably been reshuffled to keep people working on the highway department and in other departments. So that actually served the citizens of St. Joseph County here around and their public safety. And, uh, so I would be voting no.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the professional proposal on, for the Antero Group addendum to continue providing their services.
Second. We have a motion. A second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. Lastly, request approval of professional service proposal, Lawson Fisher and Associates, IEC Core Development Area Survey Services.
Before you is the, uh, professional service proposal for Lawson Fisher and Associates, uh, to do some kind of cleanup survey services, uh, in the IEC area. And so there's a number of smaller projects that we've got going on right now, uh, looking at extensions of , uh, certain roads in the IEC, certain widening, certain acquisition, and we need their survey and tracking experiences, uh, to complete these projects. So this work is set as a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. If all items are authorized, redevelopment commission approved this proposal at its meeting on November tenth. That request to.
Are there in fact any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Brown, I noticed Mr. Greif, Tom Greif, the, uh, the commission did not sign it. Was that because he wasn't present? Or did he vote for it or against it?
He wasn't present at the meeting.
He was not present at the meeting. Okay. And wasn't on Zoom or anything either.
Nope.
Well, this is again, is IEC, which is, spells B-A-D, and it's almost another thirty thousand dollars. Lawson Fisher is a fine local firm, though, and he's got a big, uh, respect towards it too. But once again, this is money wasted in New Coral Isle, funds that could have saved some highway workers, some steamsters, uh, are, are paid benefits to all county workers. So that'd be squandered on speculation of taxpayers' money, when speculation should be left to developers who want to spend their money and then risk their own money, not risk, uh, taxpayers' money. But I would be voting no.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the professional service proposal for Lawson Fisher and Associates.
Second. We have a motion. A second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, two to one. Moving on to old business. There is none. Are there any public?
Ms. Clark has engineer, Madam Engineer's comment.
And I, I'm not sure if this really should be covered under old business, or if we just moved into public comment and this can be covered here, but we have a, an issue that presented itself late last week, so I, I apologize for not being able to introduce it into the agenda, but it actually has to do with county-owned property, um, the County City Building itself, AEP, the electrical vault that is just outside our entrance. They need to perform some emergency work in that area, and the consultants that they have hired have reached out to me, I guess questioning, and hopefully, if Jamie is still on the line, from a legal standpoint or a business standpoint, we're not sure how that relationship needs to move forward to authorize them to be able to perform that work. They will be physically on county property. Of course, they would need to coordinate with Brian Davidson in respect to if there's any restrictions and those types of things that would need to occur. But just was not sure if there was formal action that needed to be taken by the board to actually authorize them to be performing that work as it is adjacent to or connected with our basement area here in the building.
For counselor for benefit, and Madam Clark, and Commissioner Costelli, if I recall, when, uh, First Horse Bank wanted to put in a bike rack in our, uh, joint area over here off of the, behind here, behind the red building, the old First Bank building, you know, we, we did vote on and approve it, uh, because it was just a bike rack. I'm sure AEP, if they have to make emergency repairs, they probably do. And I would not be against making an, under the emergency circumstances, that, uh, the commissioners authorize Engineer Clark to make a decision, uh, whether or not this should happen in the, in the near future. Because that way.
Just, Jamie Woods.
That way they could perform something before next Tuesday's commissioner meeting. Counselor, would, I'll be okay with you?
Jessica, can you hear me? It's Jamie.
Now we hear you.
Okay. Jessica, just so I'm clear, all the work is going to be performed on property entire, owned by the county. Is that right?
Correct. They need to reconstruct their electrical vault that is located entirely within county-owned property on this block.
Okay. Um, you, I think it would be appropriate that, for the commissioners at this time, since you brought it to their attention, to have a motion pass that would authorize, uh, AEP to, um, have access to the property and to engage in the work that you've outlined.
Wouldn't it be also called, okay, counselor, that Madam Engineer be authorized to act our best behalf, like we a lot of, in storm situations, you know, in case there's a snap move, and they don't have to wait till next Tuesday?
I, I, if you want to add that, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Is there such a motion? Or?
I mean, can we? Is there?
Does that motion exist?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion. A second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comments. Are there any public comments? Please, now limited to three minutes, and state your name and address for the record.
Commissioner, there's someone coming to the podium, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Dan Russo, three zero five Compton Street, New Coral Isle, Indiana. First off, I want to thank the commissioners for their service. Uh, Commissioner is feeling being, sounds healthy. I see Commissioner Thomas and Fleming are doing, Miss Fleming was, uh, struggling with her face mask, but appears to be doing okay.
Got to breathe.
Uh, I'd like to echo, uh, Commissioner Thomas's comments about, um, additional seventy thousand dollars being flushed down the planning infrastructure and growth toilet. As, as the county council, uh, commented last week, a number of, a number of them that, uh, were somewhere north of eight billion dollars thrown away on this project. And they all pretty much, through the man and woman, said, what do we have to show for this? And the answer is nothing, other than we just keep going forward and buying more property, which, of course, we helped the city last week, the, the purchasing of two properties, in addition to the two properties the county already owns, to extend the border between Highway twenty and State Road two, Lareson Road and Smootherie Road, for a rail spur and for a highway and for utility access overhead. Um, not to, not to, um, compare the two, but we wish we had, in New Coral Isle and all the provinces, the opportunity that the public had today to address these issues, to participate in the best interest of us over there, rather than having outside business interests come in and tell us, we're going to do this, you're going to love it. Trust us. Two, there's too few people have too much power to tell too many people without any power what they're going to do. There needs to be public hearings. The Department of Planning, Infrastructure and Growth, the Office of Economic Development of St. Joseph County need to be stopped right now. And there needs to be a public discussion with public input, not with our representatives behind closed doors, and then come out and tell us in a resolution, we did what's best for you. There's needs to be a open, public discussion. All further development must stop until reasonable minds can sit and debate the whole thing off the bottom instead of taking the land and then telling us, trust us, it's good. Thank you. It's good to see my friends, uh, healthy. Take care.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to have, make a public comment?
I would just comment that, uh, it's been a tense year for everybody. And, uh, so again, flares, tempers flare, because they have to come out on some issue, but they're really mad about the virus. They're mad about the problems at work. They're mad about the lack of work. They're worried about the lack of money. They're worried about, I can't find toilet paper when I go to the store. There's a lot of issues, but people need to remain calm and remember you're part of this system, the American system. We have to support each other and work together. We have Thanksgiving next week, probably one America's, one of America's greatest contributions to society, to thank God for all the blessings he's given us, generation after generation. And it's obvious that when we let everybody speak, no matter what they have to say, no matter how, you know, their maturity level was, they had the right to say it and speak, and that's due process of law. So, uh, there is, democracy is alive and well in St. Joseph County, and, uh, we're living proof of it. And we thank God for it.
Any other public comments? Hearing none. A motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Tough luck. We are recessed. Farewell, everyone.
Au revoir. You can come up here or down here.